This evening, the first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Here.
Alderman Hartman.
Here.
Alderman Runions.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our men and women in harm's way as well as our public safety members.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You may be seated. The next item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as printed and presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved in a second. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So tonight's agenda has been approved. The next item is approval of minutes, and we've got the approval of the regular session minutes from May 9th, 2023, as well as the special session on May 16th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Taylor.
I move that the minutes be approved and as printed and as presented.
Been moved that the regular session May 9th and the special session May 16th been approved and printed. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from May 9th, 2023, and special session May 16th, 2023, have been approved. There are no awards, presentation, organizational business. The next item is public comment. Anyone who would like to address the board of Alderman, please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and do sign in with our city clerk when you finish, and we all have three minutes to address the board. It is 7:02, and I declare public comment open. Can you get close? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Grandview, Missouri. My name is Ed Costa. If it matters, I live at 1107 High Grove Road, Grandview, Missouri, right next door to our Alderman Dan Hartman. Grandview, Missouri, in its early days was a paradise to its new settlers, February 6th, 1912. It's been 111 years since its founding, and it is quickly becoming the likes of Chicago, Illinois, or worse. We cannot outnumber the amount of people of the millennial outsiders invading our city limits. Speeding at thefts at C V S Pharmacy and other small businesses is getting out of control. I've talked to the manager at C V S. He's brought in managers or security several times, to no avail. People still put stuff underneath their cart, pay for a small item, and push the cart directly out the door. This is unacceptable. Speeding at thefts... I already said that part, sorry. High Grove Road has been established as a truck route on 25 mile an hour side street. This goes directly in front of an elementary school. Kids are walking this street without an adult most of the time, trying to get across the street to go to school, and cars are speeding at this street, anywhere from 25, which is the set speed limit, to over 70 at times. This is unacceptable. Speed limits have been around for 60 years. I don't want to hear that we have to have no speed bumps because it'll mess up the production of a speed... of a snowplow. This is unacceptable. We have school buses, tow trucks, residents, it doesn't matter. Everyone speeds at two times or more the speed limit. High-powered motorcycles, four-wheelers, minibikes constantly roar up and down High Grove Road from West Frontage Road to Fifth Street. There is one stop sign in between West Frontage Road and Fifth Street. This is unacceptable. If we won't enforce traffic laws now, imagine the problems that will continue in the near future. Speed on East and West Frontage Roads is moving at highway speed, literally. If I can drive my box truck at 65 miles an hour, and the truck or cars and vehicles on Frontage Roads are keeping pace with me at 65 miles an hour, that is unresponsible. If you own dogs, fencing needs to be enforced, as well as leash laws. It doesn't matter the mannerism of your dog. You have... when your dog is with you, maybe your dog is perfectly under control, but without a leash or without a proper fencing, that dog is still a wild animal. No one walking their dog should have to use mace against an out-of-control dog, including mailmen. They have to carry mace to protect themselves.
Ed, you've got 15 seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have 15 seconds.
Take responsibility. Get rid of your dogs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sign in right here, Ed. Do sign in. Thank you. Anyone else like to address? Oh, Alan's there, okay.
I'm up.
Thank you.
Alan Hanks, 3504 Robinson Pike Road, right here in town. I'm addressing a concern of mine with a condemned house at 3410 Robinson Pike Road.
Now, we do have an administrative hearing.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I'm giving my two cents.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
So I get another 15 seconds.
Yes, yes. Five seconds.
Negotiable.
Five seconds.
So, my cousins... my dad's cousin built that house in 1954 to 59. So, you know, it's... but it's right next door to me. It hasn't been maintained for 15 years. It's had three owners in the last 15 years, speculators hoping that, you know, the next big thing. The dirt's valuable because it's light industry, but the house is in such disrepair, it's condemned by the city. Thank you for having codes, but I've seen this for the last 15 years. It's going to be fixed, going to be fixed, going to be fixed, and it's kind of like, it's time. It's time. The fire department has an order to, "Don't go in the house if it's on fire." My property value has not increased in the last four years because of that property that one of the issues, and I keep my house up. So it has directly affected my property value, and it's a danger to the community, and the current owner, when he bought it, I thought, "Oh, thank goodness, finally, we got somebody," but it's kind of the same old scenario. So hopefully he takes some action. Property owner probably has some recourse, but still, he needs to be pushed to do something, so thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Did you give Becky the document?
Yes.
You did. Thank you very much. It is 7:09, and I declare public comment closed. We have no public hearings. The next area is consent items. Is there a motion for consent item C through E?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move we approve consent items C through E.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So consent items C3 have been approved. The next area is ordinances. Is there a motion for bill number 7696? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7696 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Bill number 7696, an ordinance approving a contract with Sentinel Emergency Solutions LLC for the purchase of a Rosenbauer King Cobra aerial ladder truck.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I did... I did have a quick question on that. The ordinance... we're okay in that now, but the truck's already been ordered, right?
Yes, it was ordered in December.
I just wondered why we didn't have that ordinance before we ordered it. Maybe I forgot something about it.
No, 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 no. This is pretty normal. Order sheet is a lot faster than a contract. Contract needs to be vetted by attorneys, and us, our attorneys. So it took a long time for Sentinel to find the right contract, first of all. These two individuals between Kerry and our fire chief chased after it. They said, "We trust you guys." We kept telling them that we need a contract to make sure that you guys get paid. Up until now, we have not paid them. So this contract literally is going to serve them once the truck is completed. Our staff, our fire department, has been there at least once to check the specs and see the chassis and what have you. They're building it without a contract. So we're just memorializing this by making a legitimate contract so that they can be paid. Otherwise, we won't pay them.
Well, it just seems odd to me that if this board voted no on this, they would just have to keep the truck. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes.
That is correct. That is correct.
Well, it seems like that's out of order to me.
You know, Alderman Hartman, I'm choosing my words very carefully because this is a public meeting. They are missing some steps, and this is a big business. This is a big purchase. I wouldn't start building anything without a contract, and we kept hearing back from them, "Your order sheet is enough for us."
Well, I'm not questioning the purchase. I mean, I think we're all for that.
No, I know you are. I know you are, but what I'm saying is, if this was you ordering a vehicle, let's say it's Ford, they would want a contract with you, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is a one and a half million dollar purchase. I would have had a standard contract. Our partners... it took a little bit to find that contract.
Well, again, I just think it's a lot, the process that we're going through. I think the ordinance should have been before, maybe, but that's my only question.
Yep, good. Further questions? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
The... I just... I want to thank staff for negotiating this. I know we've definitely negotiated the price down from what the original cost was to the final price that we're doing here, because I know when we approved the budget, and it was in the capital improvements line, and so we approved that budget for us to go after this, it was estimated that it was going to be a much higher cost. So we appreciate the due diligence and making sure that we're still getting the exact same product for a cheaper price, so.
Yep. I appreciate the comment. The original tag on this one was well over $1.7 million. Our team negotiated that down to little over $1.5 million, and since our agreement allows us to pay them at the end, that money has been invested. By the time we pay it off, this is going to cost us about, in a ballpark of $1.4 million. We just saved the city of Grandview over $300,000.
Further discussion?
And the other thing I'd just like to mention, I am grateful that we've been able to order the vehicle and that it's going to be here much sooner than waiting for a contract to be done. I think there's a lot of benefits for us, a lot of upside for the city of Grandview, a lot of downside for them, but that's their business. But a lot of upside for the city of Grandview, so very beneficial. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Motion for second reading? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7696 be placed on a second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7696, an ordinance approving a contract with Sentinel Emergency Solutions LLC for the purchase of a Rosenbauer King Cobra aerial ladder truck.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7696 be placed on its final passage and said bill being enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7438.
So bill number 7696 has passed, is now ordinance 7438. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Kerry, for your hard work. Appreciate it. Is there a motion for bill number 7697?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that we put bill number 7697 on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
A second.
Bill number 7697, an ordinance approving a contract with Civic Plus for the purchase and installation of a recreation software and authorizing payment.
Thank you. Is there a... any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7697 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second.
Bill number 7697, an ordinance approving a contract with Civic Plus for the purchase and installation of a recreation software and authorizing payment.
Any discussion? Jared, you have anything you would like to add, or you've got your manager, Justin, with you? Anything at all?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, so we just want to say thanks. This software is going to greatly improve our usability by not only staff, but also our members and stuff as well. So we'll be able to have a mobile-friendly option. We'll be able to use this for rentals of different facilities. You can do that online. It'll save our members a lot of time signing up for a membership in person or having struggles on their phone, and it'll make our jobs more efficient. We can spend more time interacting with the members and creating that quality experience. So we'll also save money through this software as well. So it's a good thing for us, and it'll make us more efficient in our operations that much better.
Fantastic. Thank you. Justin, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I don't. I think everything's been said.
Any further discussion? Yes, Alderman Taylor.
This is just the software, correct? There's no hardware for the purchasing?
No, this is just for the software, and then Civic Plus will actually host all the software and stuff off-site and have their own security. Yep, on their... under their servers and everything. So they'll be all secured and everything else. They'll maintain it with their IT staff and everything else.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
What is the timeframe? When you think you're going to be completed with this and everything active, because a lot of people are waiting to see?
Yep, yep. So it's a... for them, it's a six-to-seven month process for getting all the memberships and transferred over and all the information for all the users and the software up and running that's specific to us. So we're looking at towards the end of 2023, switching from our current software over to this new Civic Plus, so... and having a seamless transition between that. So by the end of 2023, we'll have this in place.
So you're planning on putting something out to the public, let them know if your membership... you come in, your membership don't work, this is why, because everybody... you know, you're talking about the end of the year, going into the new year.
Yep.
You know, a lot of things change.
Yep, and so we'll have a plan. When we get a better idea of when Civic Plus is going to finish up, we'll put something out to our members as well in advance, saying, "Hey, there's going to be a switch. Here's what you need to do to get transferred over." Most people that already have a membership will get transferred automatically. It's just a matter of coming and picking up a new key fob that we're going to order, those sort of things, so.
Okay.
Good. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
So Jared, will the view be in operating at all times, or will there be any time that the view will have to be closed because of the software?
We don't anticipate it being closed during the software installation or anything.
Okay, good.
Yep, so we don't expect to have to shut the facility down or any interruption in service.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes.
So Civic Plus is providing the software, correct? They're going to own the hardware, and we'll be renting from them, right?
Yep, so we have an annual agreement for... to use and operate that software, but they create it specifically for Grandview, so we can tailor it. We have access to the backend. We can change things and basically control it like the same we do now.
Do we know if anyone else is going to be using this hard drive?
No, it'll just be us. Yep.
So was that a play on words, tailor it?
Yeah.
I was just... I was just curious.
Pun intended, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Just curious.
Mayor, if I may. Alderman Taylor, you were talking about this. This is a cloud-based hosting, so this is technically a hybrid model for us. Some ORs are in our servers. We're small enough where we can own our servers and maintain them for a long period of time, but something like this, we use cloud. City's financial system, which is the backbone, is a cloud-based system also, right?
Further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Maloney.
Move that ordinance number... bill number 7697 be placed on final passage and said bill being enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7439.
So bill number 7697 has passed. It is ordinance 7439. Justin and Jared, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Looking forward to it. The next area is other business, and let's start with Alderman Maloney.
Yes.
Any other business?
The pedestrian crossing on Main Street that's going to be on the east side there. The while back, when a car knocked, you know, jumped the curbs and knocked the crossing signal lights and everything in the middle of the Island of Refuge there, I asked if we could paint the outside, like kind of the curb, so it can kind of stand out a little bit. Well, it's been hit again, and it's getting replaced again, so I don't know what the situation was. I don't know if paint would have stopped that or anything, but it keeps getting hit, so I don't blame pedestrians for not actually using that crosswalk, because it is kind of like a target right now. But if we can help paint the outside or even have some of the poles, the kind of the plastic ones with the reflectors on there to draw some sort of attention, because when it rains, it is difficult to actually see. It blends in perfectly with the pavement, and so if we could actually paint that, the curbs around there, I think it would do a great deal of help.
Alderman Maloney, it's on their workload. It's on the list. I'll follow up with them and see when is that happening.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Bibbs.
Um, I noticed when I was coming here tonight, there's still a lot of trash on 125th Street, right there on the corner of Harry Truman Drive, and I was wondering if do we have a plan for that, to get that trash? It's a lot. It's all in the street now, I noticed.
Alderwoman Bibbs, you and I had this conversation today.
Right.
And I added to our list of streets to pick up trash. As a matter of fact, including myself, a bunch of us were out this Monday and picking up trash. So if our neighbors can help us out, which you know some of them, who is polluting these corridors, I'm happy to go after those folks, because our efforts every week, every month is not going to be enough. We're going to be needing help. But I added to our list, as you well know, you also talked to a few of our employees.
Correct.
As they were there today. They picked up some, but they might have missed some because they were there for mowing responsibilities. We mowed that area, but it's on our list. We'll get to it next Monday. I'm not quite sure where we're going, but join us. We're happy to have other residents, businesses, whoever else want to join us. And I'm working on my tan at this point. It got really warm Monday.
And I want to thank Public Works, because they did do a good job in mowing. Very good job.
And one anecdote, where their mowing is not a city property also.
Alderman Hartman.
A couple things, Mayor. I got... I got an email or a text from a woman today on a couple items. One of them, I sent to Jamal on the Blue Ridge project. Is there any way, Jamal, that we can speed that process up? You said we're waiting for the Canadian Railroad new owners to approve our plans or something?
That's right. So Alderman Hartman, I'll explain this two ways. One is railroads do move on their own speed. However, at our bimonthly meeting, I think Alderman Runions was there. You were unable to make it, but we discussed this briefly. We just received our third payment from these guys on a project.
Mm-hmm.
That has not even bid it yet. So we have well over a million dollars accumulating interest. So if they did not have interest in approving those plans, they wouldn't give us a million dollars. So that's a new development on our part. So through the design team, which they specifically dictate what design team that they use, that's the one we hired back in a year ago or so, I asked them a favor earlier this week, as a matter of fact, Monday, saying that, "Get me front of the new railroad company," because it became Canadian Airline. It's no longer Kansas City South Rail. So they have few contacts. I'm trying to get a face-to-face conversation, saying that, "You guys approved the design. You just need to put your stamp. This is good to bid." So the moment we get to that, that is going to move a lot faster than everyone thinks.
So is that the last step, Jamal, that we need to do up there?
Pretty much.
Before we can start?
Definitely, definitely. So if you remember, we very carefully and very economically purchased a good chunk of land there, which the bridge needs, the old Rock City, right? That's been taken care of. Once the design is approved, right, we're going to bid it. At that point, we'll know exactly how much it's going to cost, and if there is a cost difference from what was estimated in today, we're going to go back to our partners and say... explain to them that we have an agreement here, 25-25-50. This is your additional cost because you created this environment.
So you really think that we're going to get that process done by the end of this year?
Bidding has got to happen by the end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're pushing for.
Well, that's what I sent her the response back, and you know, she said, "Well, it's kind of disappointing," but... and I said, "Well, I'll just..."
I am too.
It is.
I am too.
It's been a long time, but...
I am too.
Another thing that I had on my notes was, and she mentioned this also, was the Rock City property, you know, the maintenance up there at the Rock City property, since we have that, and I think I brought that up a year, maybe two years ago.
And we cleaned it up.
But that is a mess up there, Jamal, you know, and I'll actually read what she sent me.
Sure.
"I'm curious, why isn't the city of Grandview taking care of the old concrete plant area on Blue Ridge near the train bridge that I hear the city owns now? Businesses and citizens receive letters if their lawns and areas are not kept up and mowed. I appreciate you checking on this," and I think that's basically exactly what I said a couple years ago or something, since we bought that. Those old buildings, and I drove up in there today. I don't know if you've driven in there lately or not.
I was there last month.
There is so much trash, old tires, empty five-gallon buckets, looks like tar and stuff, railroad ties. I mean, it is a complete mess.
Sure, sure, sure. So I was there a month ago, and it was cleaned up by our crews. I'll go take a look at it, too. So are you talking about the Blue Ridge side or the Duck Road side?
I drove in the Duck Road side.
Okay.
Drove all the way down, then I drove around and looked up the Blue Ridge side. The Blue Ridge side looks better than the Duck Road side.
Yeah.
But there's been nothing done, no mowing, no brush cleanup, no... I can't see anything that's been done up there. So what is our process on that? She has a good legitimate question. How can we send these letters out when we can't maintain that? Do we have a plan to clean that place up?
So it's part of the contract that we just engaged with a third party who helps us out with the mowing?
They will go in and clean it up.
Yeah, that's one of the properties that is listed.
Well, the buildings also, you know, the old buildings are...
Burned down.
They're what?
The old building burned down before we closed, if you remember.
There's still structures up there.
Um, yeah, there is. There is one, almost like... looked like a garage, but it's not a building.
Well, they're very dangerous structures. I mean, you can tell there's... I would be happy to drive up there with you.
Yeah, but let's do...
I just feel like if somebody owned that property, some individual owned that property, that we would be on them, you know, we would make them... You know, we would make them come up to our codes. And that's, I just want to know what our plan is to get that whole thing cleaned up and what we're going to do with the property.
So, our goal is to do the construction, obviously, as soon as this approval goes through. That's number one. Number two is if there are areas that we can clean up ourselves, we will. If not, we'll hire somebody to help us out clean it up because it seems like we need to knock down a couple of buildings before we put the bridge in.
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, they're obviously standing there. There was fires out in front of some of them. I don't know if the homeless camps are still in there or not, but.
A month ago, there was, there was none. Our fire chief and I went in there and it was clear, but you never know.
And there is some dumping that's still going on from the Duck Road side. I don't think they're doing it from Blue Ridge, but I think they're coming in from the backside.
I'll follow up with Public Works to see what else we can do.
You can drive in there, it's not blocked off on the Duck Road side. And so.
There's more activity on the.
You know, we talk about people getting hurt on our properties. I mean, you know, we all know that's an issue up there. So, I don't know. I would just like to see some kind of plan of what we're going to do, you know, and when it'll get done.
I'll have the conversation with Public Works and see what we can do. Look, I'm not going to tell you that we're going to be able to address every single nuisance and at the same time, cleanup efforts. Every Monday, we do something, the other thing has to wait. If this is a priority for the elected officials, we'll make that a priority within the next couple of weeks.
Well, again, it just looks bad when we send out letters.
Absolutely. I don't disagree.
You know, your grass gets a foot and that grass has never been touched.
I don't disagree. We'll take care of it.
That's all I got to say.
On that issue, wouldn't it be a lot quicker if we just put a gate up there for right now and stop it before it in there when it drops off?
So, we've tried, they move it.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the unfortunate part of it. We put big rocks, somehow they moved it too. I don't know if it's the railroad trying to get access to their rail and they have equipment, because you really need equipment to be able to move stuff.
Yes.
But I will also remind you guys, before City took over that property, that was a chop house. Literally, they were bringing vehicles and swap engines and chopped doors and what have you. We cleared all those vehicles. Since then, yeah, sure, we'll keep an eye out.
Alderman Runions?
First off, I got the same email. Talked to the lady about it, the same issues, but I think you said you, we hired transitioning, Trans Systems a year ago. I think they've been involved in this project since at least 2012, because they did some of the original designs.
Yeah, that I do not know, if they've been involved since 2012, because I was not here.
So, I think we need to contact them and ask Canadian Railroad, Tennessee Southern, to come and talk to us and explain what the delay is.
Yep, yep, yep.
And there's, it's happened before. It happened before, and there's no reason why they shouldn't come and talk to us.
I agree with you 100%.
Have you asked them?
Yeah, I have many times, many times. It seems like with the merger, the people who were there, no longer there, we're finding new people to talk to, they commit to meeting with us either via Zoom or phone calls, and somehow, they just get tied up and it's rescheduled. At this point.
I have a suggestion. We let it out to the press. That's what happened before with the 12-foot trestle. The comment from Public Works at that time, "Kansas Southern won't talk to me." We discussed it in a, in a meeting, and the next day, we heard from Kansas Southern that they would take that down. Originally, the city wanted to dig a hole, lower that so that we could get semis under that. And that made no sense that we didn't ask, but once we asked, Kansas Southern was right there and took the trestle down. So.
What year was this? What year was this?
2005, it was just.
2005.
Like a month after I was elected, the first time. And that's what got them moving, because it would come out in a public meeting and they heard about it and they called the next day. It's time to put the pressure on them. If that's, if they're the problem, we need to let the press know we're waiting on them.
Yep.
Because this thing should have been done 30 years ago. Be truthful, that should have been replaced 30 years ago.
And I agree with you 100%.
But it's really the city, it's their.
It's their bridge.
Their, it's theirs to approve it, but it's a betterment for the City of Grandview. Very, I mean, we've got, I went to Texas and back and the worst road I ever drove on all trip was from the trestle to my house on Blue Ridge.
Well, before we even go to the press, Congressman Cleaver says he wants to get involved first. So, let's make sure we reach out back to Andrew and Congressman Cleaver and let him be the one to drive that process.
Happy to do both, all three. These gentlemen are telling me that they're doing many bridge projects with these guys, and they're confident that they're going to get me face-to-face with them once more. My last face-to-face was very fruitful. We ended up with a million dollars in our coffers.
True, but that's.
So, what I'm saying is that was two months ago.
We're saving money, putting it in the bank, we're not getting the project done.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they, they're on the press now, everybody, they had this accident up north here the other day. That was on Kansas Southern's. So, all these railroads are getting this, you know, they're having problems everywhere. We need to get on board and say, we've got a problem too.
I don't disagree.
I agree with Dan about the Rock City, it needs to be cleaned up. Even under the trestle right now, there's trash everywhere. The Lake property on Third Street.
Yep.
It's getting worse, not better. I drive by there every couple of days. There's more trash and stuff stacked in there. You can see it now, they've got a gate.
Recently, that they cleaned up quite a bit. Lake property?
On Third Street.
Recently, we had this conversation and they did clean up.
Oh. The property to the north side of Lake's property has a, was recently leased, and they are, they do have somebody in there cleaning it up, but they brought in a large dumpster. They've been cleaning it up. There's also been an individual that's been in there that's been pulling in and out cars. The, it's subdivided on that property to the south side and the.
The north side is the.
It's where all the cars are parked.
No, the dumpster people.
Yeah. They have been in there cleaning, they have been working, doing something in there. I was out there, what, about three weeks ago?
Yep.
And I spoke to the landowner, Donna Lake's mother, Sharon Lake.
Yeah.
And she said that she would contact and make sure they're still steadily working to clean it up. It is a huge mess.
Oh, I agree.
It's going to take quite a bit, and I don't know how they're going to get some of that stuff out.
But I went by last week and I went by again today on the way up here, and there's more trash piled up closer to the, to the gate that you can see through. And then, and then on the south side, there's another problem with those cars in there. They've been there forever. There's two, there's, these properties need to be cleaned up.
We'll follow up, we'll follow up with Sharon Lake as well as our.
Chief, I've got one more question. I seen one of our fire trucks belting at the repair shop yesterday.
Trans West, yes. Trans West.
Was it out of service again?
We have three fire apparatus. We have the ladder truck, and then we have two pumpers. The ladder truck was down, I'm sorry, Pumper 722 is down, having its fuel lines replaced, so it was out of operation for a while, but we had the reserve apparatus that was operational at the time. So, we've had all three of our fire trucks, we've had at least the two operational at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Taylor, anything? Alderman Rousey?
Well, I have two things. Chambers having a classic golf tournament on June the 8th.